Okay, this work session of the Luray Town Council is now come to order. Will you please stand and join me for a moment of silence? I'll ask council president to move it.
Pardons ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom I take justice for all.
Joey, I apologize for cutting you off.
Oh, I didn't realize that was so well. I thought we had two more minutes on.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're the mayor.
Thank you. Daniel, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Dofmire.
Here.
Mr. Beckers.
Here.
Ms. Lilic.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sauer.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, Mr. Burke, I guess you have the agenda?
Yes, sir. First item for council's discussion is tourism zones. This had come up as an item for future discussion at your retreat. The state allows towns to establish tourism zones and other incentive programs through Virginia Code fifty-eight point one dash thirty-eight fifty-one. There's a couple of examples provided. Front Royal did a very simplified tourism zone and Withville did a very extensive incentive package. There's, again, that was just to give you all, the town could do something very limited or very extensive depending on how desired there is to have new businesses in different locations. They're, it provided for y'all, there's a map of the various, I think there's about seventy-six, seventy-seven tourism zones that are established throughout the Commonwealth. Some localities have multiple areas because you can either define a whole area, a small area, and then they have multiple areas throughout the community. And then, so, as council starts your discussion, the map here is a map that shows all the different zonings as well as the enterprise zone overlay. And staff would recommend consideration of, you know, your tourism zones being limited to either the business or limited industrial zone properties or just within that enterprise zone. There's some other locations in town, but for the most part, that would cover the majority of the town's commercial and industrially zoned parcels. And then it's also council's discretion as to what types of incentives we'd want to pursue. I would let council know that our software, any sort of either rebate or finance is challenging because our software does not allow staff to build that in. It has to be an external spreadsheet, if you will, that we have to track for any of the incentives that we would possibly create.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
This came out, you said, because of retreat. It seems a good idea. Do we know of any good that we might get out of this immediately? If we had a, I mean, is there people wanting to start businesses, but they don't because they don't get incentives from us?
Well, thankfully, we've had a number of restaurants that have opened.
Without the tourism zone?
So, I... Most communities that have them, they probably would be able to entice new businesses to come in. I wouldn't be able to tell you, yes, we'd be able to generate, you know, two, five, but it can't hurt. It is an incentive and it does allow the town to say, hey, we are open for business and we're willing to work with you. And these are the incentives that we can provide to new or expanding businesses. That's the other thing that we need to include in this discussion so that our existing businesses don't feel slighted, is that you can, this can cover any new or expanding tourism-related businesses. So that if for any reason the Mimsland wanted to add another twelve stories, we could work with them because they're expanding. But we're not looking for them to expand twelve stories, but that's just to give you an example that, yes, some of the local businesses, if they were to...
I get confused. We got enterprise zone, we have lots of other zones, and it seems like we're just adding another one for, because we can.
Because we can and we are a tourism town.
So we won't push for that?
Well, unfortunately, it's, because of our, because of limited rail connectivity to the, to any and all towns other than through the inland port in the valley and due to our limited interstate connectivity, industrial development within the town will be small scale at best. So the majority of the businesses that we will be able to attract would be a tourism-related business.
Kind of sad that we're giving up on manufacturing plants, but I guess Blue Will has been going for a while.
Well, it's simply unfortunate. The rails don't do direct drop-off in Luray anymore. And so without direct supply of materials, it's hard to make an investment in an industrial complex in the valley. And honestly, even at the inland port, the majority of the businesses that are developing in Warren and Frederick County are distribution centers. They're not actually making anything anymore.
The big buildings.
But again, they're not manufacturing onsite anymore. Those are just folks that are having materials brought in by rail to the inland port and then those distribution centers load them on trucks to be distributed throughout the area.
I'm not opposed to it. I just, I'll kind of get my head around it.
I mean, I would still, as you go forward with research and we go forward with considering these things, in the same vein as y'all, including the Withville incentives, which are, go beyond just tourism. I mean, they're applicable to all kinds of businesses. They have that grant in there that corresponds to job creation, which I think is really nice, disregarding fiscal restraints for a moment. So I would encourage y'all going forward to include the tourism zones in the conversation, but still, you know, look at all kinds of examples that would go with all kinds of business. I mean, yes, there are limitations, but we also do have, you know, sites that would be great if you could entice somebody. And I mean, I wouldn't totally rule out, like, light, precision industry and kind of niche things that might be looking for a community like us, particularly if the incentive structure is right. So that would be my two cents there.
The tourism zone can really complement the enterprise zone. The enterprise zone, the eligibility to benefit from that, you have to make quite investment in capital and job creation. And so when we look at the town of Luray and the likelihood or feasibility of that being or providing value, it's limited, right? And those, we could and should revisit those because those numbers can be reduced. We've had that designation now long enough that we could make a sound argument, I believe, to the state to reduce those numbers. The numbers that are included currently in that designation are, were encouraged to be included in that application in order for us to even receive the designation because what had been originally was proposed was declined by a working group at Department of Housing and Community Development in saying that they, they would have been the lowest in the state. And even the ones that were adopted, I believe, are still the lowest in the state, those investment requirements, the job creation numbers. The enterprise zone can complement that and it makes more sense for the type of business that I feel like the town and the properties or parcels on the outskirts of town even might be able to realize. And, you know, it's not, when we talk about tourism, I mean, it can include your retail, your lodging, your restaurants. I mean, if the county were to entertain it again, again, it would, yes, absolutely include things like Yogi and perhaps could benefit the project they're trying to pursue out by the golf course. I would propose that if this is, if this is something that the council would want to move forward with, that perhaps staff consider developing a committee to which they might invite the county director of economic development and LDI director to the table to be a part of that conversation, to start brainstorming on, you know, what program for Luray and moreover, ideally Page County. I think if the town of Luray is going to consider it, it would behoove the county and the other towns to maybe look at it. And that's how we, that's how we proceed it with the enterprise zone.
I think we also ought to include the community college with the workforce solutions they're doing. Seems like I was finding out they wanted to get simulators and get people trade-type jobs. It sounds like they, we need to pursue hospitality and other type skills.
That discussion has been done in the past. Unfortunately, there's, there's certification as to safe handling of food, but, and we can check again, absolutely.
It just all goes together in my mind, you know?
But it's just, there's, there was limited certifications that the community college could offer.
Well, we keep hearing the restaurants can't function because they can't hire the right people or keep the right people.
And, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all industry, not, yeah. And as far as the zoning map and where it would make sense, it's not, I don't think, usual to see industrial, industrially zoned properties included, as not to say that we couldn't include them. I mean, having the Shenandoah River and the mountains right around us, it would make sense that we could be successful in securing a manufacturer or producer of kayaks or ATVs or, I mean, you never know. So, and the tourism zone could in fact foster that type of development in industrially zoned properties, but it's, it is unusual to see that type of zoning included in a tourism district, for what it's worth.
Yeah, the extent might be a larger-scale brewery or something along, you know, that goes beyond our commercial zone, but that makes sense.
I think that Nina and Jackie, though, as I mentioned earlier, they may be able to speak to, from their experience already, any opportunities or challenges that they've observed to where it might help when you think about what type of incentives should we consider, you know, trying to be responsive to the things they've already heard.
All right, Steve, anybody else on it?
I think for a future date, it might be productive. I mean, maybe this is a meeting that has Q and A, or maybe this is just in the form of an email with a lot of attachments. But I think to be able to review those things that we already have on the book, if we have any incentives for the existing enterprise zone, I know there's a revolving loan fund somewhere. I don't know if that's with the town or LDI or a little bit of both, kind of quasi there, but if we could have the opportunity to review what we have or that maybe we're under-leveraging now and then come back, discuss and have a Q and A, I think that could also be helpful.
And by all means, yes, the town does have a revolving loan program and it is available to any business in the town. And it, we do partner with LDI to work through that. And, yes, it's open to all of the businesses and we have struggled to find businesses that were interested in participating.
Yeah, so if you'd like to discuss it sometime, I'd be happy to explain that. And I do think, I'm glad that you brought that up because that is something that we have in place immediately to offer, you know, until we have a chance to look at these things more. But that program is underutilized right now. And we have funds, we have in excess of seventy thousand dollars in funds that are restricted for that use only, that currently we have no applicants for. And so that is a partnership with LDI and that LDI typically recognizes a business that is in need, maybe a new business or a business who's looking to expand. And typically, they will foster the application process and it will come to you guys for final approval. And we've had a few interests in it lately. We've had a lot of success in the past, a lot of very successful stories with that.
Yeah, Broadport is one of the success stories.
Yes, absolutely. But no, no recent applicants and it is an interest-free loan, so.
What's the term of it?
Typically five years.
Typically five years. We usually try to go anywhere between ten thousand and thirty, we've done as much as thirty-five thousand for a single business. We try to gauge the current interest with, you know, how many we could serve at that time, whether it be ten thousand, thirty-five thousand, you know. If we have no applicants, I mean, I'm not opposed to lending a significant amount. But, yeah, we can...
Do you all have a sense of what is limiting the uptake? I mean, are there eligibility issues? Is it a publicization?
I'll be honest, the application process is very simple.
Yes.
Probably lack of awareness, it sounds like, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, we...
Like, we have informed a few of the new businesses that it was available in.
We have. I think Jackie has as well. I'm not really sure what the issue is because it is an interest-free loan. And maybe folks, you know, maybe they are purchasing a property and they need more than we have to offer, but we can certainly offer things that will foster job creation and solid improvements and things like that, so.
Absolutely.
Definitely a program worthwhile, so.
Well, thank you all. I'll take you up on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Anybody else that want to kind of decide what we have or maybe review what we have and what the tourism zone would add to that?
Yeah, and we'll meet with the county and LDI and possibly the towns to see what we can do to, to come together with a plan that works for almost everybody.
All right, Steve, I guess you're still up, accessory dwelling units?
Yes, sir. Another item that came out of your retreat was a desire to talk about accessory dwelling units within the town. The town does permit accessory dwelling units in certain locations, but there are some requirements as far as it has to be within a structure that was constructed prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and eight, and it has to have a separate utility connection for the accessory dwelling unit. If there is a desire to, for council to evaluate or to expand the ability for properties to have a mother-in-law suite, if you will, on the property, that is something that the town could explore. One of the hesitations, at least from a staff perspective, is that you, you come in, you ask for an ADU to house your parents or a grown child, and then five years down the road, there isn't a need by those individuals. And then what do I do with it? I turn it into a short-term rental and it becomes a zoning enforcement issue. So there, there is a benefit as far as the ability to have additional housing on properties, but it does potentially pose zoning issues. And in the past, we've been simply directing individuals looking to have a separate structure if they incorporate an addition to their home that is something that is allowed by rights. So we've been, we've had a few folks that have come in looking to do that and we've redirected them to do expansion of their existing homes to meet the same need.
Is there any way that a condition, do you think there's anything that could address the concern that you brought up there? Could there be like a very explicit condition about not in the future life of the unit using it for that purpose or is that still an enforcement issue?
Again, right now, if, if council were to consider new ones, possibly putting that as a special use permit, so that that could be one of the conditions. However, it would still, ultimately, it's, it's like any individual that's trying to do something that may not be compliant until we're made aware of it and then we have to pursue the enforcement. So, yeah.
Yeah, I would just, I wrote all these in two thousand and eight. I think, I think too many. We put so many conditions on it, you, basically, it's like two people in the town can do it. So I would just retool it and make one of the conditions that cannot be a short-term rental. I mean, we have to get a special use permit for a short-term rental anyway. If the intent is to provide more opportunities for people to have a place to live, I would retool the whole thing and just make it, you know, can't be a short-term rental. I think a few of those things that are in there now are good, but, you know, I would mind trying to write something up that might meet those needs and give us an opportunity. I don't think you can see people knocking the door down to come in and convert units. It costs quite a bit of money to convert something into a, but also I would take away the requirement that it has to be separately metered. I mean, wouldn't encourage people to have other housing options that aren't short-term rentals, slapping ten, twelve thousand dollars on before you even get started. I mean, that's, I don't think that's a great, you know, and Jason, you know all about. I mean, and there are a lot of existing structures that could work and I think there could potentially be some new structures built in particular, you know? It's a case-by-case basis, but I think it could work.
So how would you manage that? Because part of the rationale for that was then later on it split off and sold separately, right? And then they have shared?
Yeah, it wouldn't be other, you split off.
So you would have to have that as a condition in there that...
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't have a big enough lot size to split off, so it'd have to go with the land.
Yeah, okay. So what was, so what is the rationale of having a separate meter then? Let me ask it that way.
Yeah.
If it can't ever be split off, what difference does it make to us?
I'll tell you what I think it was.
It, well, primarily, it's just, I think part of it would be if no one's in it, then you cut it off at the meter and, and it's, it's done rather than cutting it off at, you know, having a separate cutoff valve from wherever you're extending it from. And beyond that, I think that the intent was that, you know, if your, your child, your parent moved in there, you're able to monitor independently what their, their usage would be. Because part of the problem that the town has is a lot of our customers don't recognize how much water they're using and it becomes problematic for us of having to send the meter readers back several months to confirm the readings are accurate and the readings are correct rather than just recognizing that, you know, oh, I've got to hold another family living on my property, so my, my, my water usage is...
Yeah, remember the eight hundred dollars you collect every month for it?
Yeah.
Or you rent or whatever, you know, so.
So I, I, I'm not sure if that was where you were going with it.
As Councilman Webb was saying, he was a planner then and I thank you for working with me.
Yeah.
But I know going before council and trying to do the same thing back, how many years that was, a long time ago. Part of this in the code is, is in there because of the place I had, the home was built in the nineteen hundreds, the accessory dwelling was built in the twenties and it had water and sewer. So it was existing, but I ran through a bunch of pushback on the fact that it's still being connected to my town water and sewer because there wasn't a way, it was revenue-driven, there wasn't a way to get more money, you know? But I mean, but at the end of the day, every time the sink was turned on or every time the toilet was flushed, whether it was in the primary residence or accessory dwelling, it all came through the same meter. It was all, you know, paid per gallon, both on the sewer side and the water side. But, but the tap fees were, were, were not there. And I can remember back then, if we go back and even check, it was even discussion, which I sort of got a little vocal with the town manager at the time, but of having an additional fee tacked on that was just a surcharge on top of my water and sewer bill that was a monthly fee just because there's another accessory dwelling. But everything was coming, everything's being paid for by the gallon, you know, through the meter. But, but I agree with, with Mr. Webb that as far as cleaning some of that up, I think would make sense. And it is something we still have to watch close and there'll be those challenges of something ten years later becoming that short-term rental and operating for a while before anybody even knows it or whatever, but, you know, I agree.
And y'all had mentioned that the existing and permanent structure requirement was kind of a, a way that discouraged people from, because of the profit incentive, going and building the ADU and then with the intent ultimately of doing the short-term rental. But I also do think that that, like, significantly restrains the opportunities for ADUs to be a solution on, you know, housing affordability for grandma, granddad, stepmom, whatever. So I would encourage y'all to look at that part of it and see if there's a way to change that that still preserves, you know, the ability to defend against abuses.
I think you offered to rewrite that.
I mean, give me about twenty minutes, I'll be done by the end of the meeting. Now, I'll, 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 I'll draft, I'll draft something up for the next work session.
All right, thank you, Lee. All right, anybody else on that? All right, Hawksville-Greenway Jager Spring Extension. Mr. Dudley, Lattes, y'all have something? Nothing?
Well, basically.
Steve?
We're honored to be here.
Please stay seated, anyway. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you for considering this and Steve, go ahead and tell them what we need.
Okay, well, at your, at your regular meeting, your February meeting, representatives from the Greenway Foundation brought council up to speed with where we were as far as the preliminary engineering study and that we were nearing completion of the first phase. What, the discussion before you tonight is continuing to the next phase of that preliminary engineering study, which the proposal from RACI is about twenty-seven thousand dollars and the Greenway Foundation has committed to providing half of that funding. In addition, RACI has identified a need to perform a survey and I forget the, the...
Title.
Report, thank you, for the property. There's been some concern that there might be, well, that there were property boundaries that have been adjusted over the past hundred and fifty years and making sure that the way that the property boundaries are currently identified at the county is the correct location of those boundaries. And that proposal to do that survey and title is five thousand dollars. So basically, what staff would request would be at your next meeting, council's consideration of authorization of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars of ARPA funds to continue the next, or the second phase of the preliminary engineering report and authorize RACI to do the survey of the property so that we know confidently what the limits of the town ownership are.
I really like the idea of getting a good survey. Since I've been on the council, there's been a couple of things came up that if they'd done something else fifty years ago, we wouldn't be in the mess we're in now, so definitely. Because it's in the county now. Is part of it in the county?
Yes, sir.
I thought we owned all the land, though.
You do.
But some of the surveys are in the county. I don't get that.
Well, the, the, the property, majority of the property is outside the town limits. And...
But we own it, though.
We have, we have title to it.
Okay.
There has been question because there's no true survey attached to the title. And over the years, there have been adjustments to some of the boundaries of the adjacent properties that the town does not own. And so in order to... And so in order to ensure that what we believe we own, we can confidently present to anyone going forward.
What we do.
This is a worthy effort. It also would allow the, the Greenway Foundation, some of the grants and, and incentives that they've been pursuing, there has been questions as to, do you really own, or does the town really own the controlling interest of the property? This would then allow them to be able to say absolutely.
Like low-cost insurance based on the scope of the project, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for this, yeah, let's do it. Next meeting.
Anybody else, any other questions on this?
In the whole scope of the work here with RACI, I don't know if surveys are part of it. The other work, there's, there's nothing that is going to be time-sensitive or lost over time. It's, I mean, where I'm, why I'm asking this is, as this moves forward and knowing the, the funding it's going to take to do it, I want to see this project happen too, but the, the years down the road as we work towards that goal, nothing that we're talking about paying for now is something that we're going to have to pay again in a couple of years because whatever work was done is now expired or something has changed as far as code or anything like that. Does that make sense when I'm asking, is this going to hold true?
This should get us, this should get us a, a, a preliminary set of plans that we could start talking with contractors to, to give us better estimates on. Also, the permitting that we're pursuing as far as the creek crossing, it's a yes and no. Once we get a permit, it's not a, you have a permit forever, there is a five-year period on a, on a core permit.
Typically cores are five years, and then Marine, Virginia Marine Resources is anywhere from three to five.
So just don't want us paying for something that we have to pay for again before this project actually.
And that's where the core permit, could things change, you know, when we would have to go to renew it potentially? But it's not likely because this isn't a, a major inevitable waterway. And unless there's some significant change in, in how the federal government sees it, we may have to renew the permit in another five years. And so we might incur some cost, but the, the engineering behind the basis for the permit will be in hand and, and we won't have to replicate that most likely.
Anybody else?
We have twenty-five thousand, the foundation has committed twenty-five thousand to the area.
Well, the more we go along.
Twenty-seven five.
I remember Mr. Gray saying that he'd be happy to give anybody a tour. I think I need to call him and call you and see if we can set something up for several of us. It'd be really interesting to get the whole picture in my head.
Yeah.
Where it is.
He would love to do that, he really would.
I'm going to do that.
Sure.
If, if it was the majority of council, it'd be a, a special meeting, so maybe what we could do is make your March work session out.
Hey, that's an idea.
Now, electricity's relatively limited out there, and it, it is slowly getting lighter longer. We may have to look at maybe a five o'clock start, just so that we're not out there with candles.
Oh, you're going to have to stream it outside though.
No, sir.
Now, on the budget calendar, I'm assuming this would be the same day as the work session. It has the proposed budget presentation on that day?
If, potentially, yes, sir. Well, we could still talk about it, yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
There's, and again, it, it, we, we could do a special meeting if council desired. It, 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 it just, work sessions typically work for everyone, but if y'all wanted to do it on a Wednesday night or a, a Thursday night, we can, we can make that happen.
Sunset's after. Then ride back, come back here?
Potentially, yes, sir, if, if you wanted.
He's talking about the work session, twenty-eight, so sunset's at like seven thirty-three at that day anyway, so.
Tap change.
Let's give that some thought.
We'll touch base with Rod and make sure he can be there.
Alright, anybody else? Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you all for what you're doing, we certainly appreciate it.
My pleasure, thank you.
And thank you all for being our audience tonight.
You can't leave.
Yes, thank you for your commitment.
Alright, Steve, I guess we're on the budget calendar.
Yes, sir, this is just to, to give council an update on, and again, this is just a draft of what the budget review can be. Basically, the presentation of it by state code has to be before April first, so we would propose to do that at your March twenty-eighth meeting. And then subsequent to that, there can be discussions specific to general fund, enterprise funds, as much as council needs to, to delve into it. We also have to provide y'all a draft of the advertisement that identifies the basic components of the, of the budget for the citizens so that they can have a general understanding of what would be under consideration. And then we have early and late public hearing and budget adoption dates, depending on how much review and, and updating of the budget council desires to have. The council does have to have the budget adopted by July one. The earlier that we can get it in place allows Danielle to get all of the, the information out that, that needs to go.
Anybody on that?
Has there been any movement on what Randy Arrington was asking about? Do you know anything about changing it so we don't have to be in the newspaper all the time, it can be on social, it's going to be on online?
I've not heard if that was enough or not.
That's going to the state delegates, right?
Yes, sir.
That'd make it a lot less expensive for us.
Sure they have a lot of newspapermen bending their ear though.
Yeah, they do. The whole Virginia Press Association.
But there's fewer and fewer of those, I think.
What's that?
There's fewer and fewer newspaper people bending their ears, at least in small towns.
Yeah, with all the consolidations going on, yeah.
Well, we're continuing to do newspaper ads, and we will be including the newspaper ad on our social media because council did desire to make sure that we had as broad a coverage of, of all those public hearings. So that, that will be on your March, the public hearings for both the council and the planning commission in March will be broadcast March second as our, our morning advertisement.
That's great, thank you.
Alright, Steve, I guess keep going, Fairview subdivision.
Alright, speaking of council's public hearings, the next three items are your public hearings for March. The first one is the rezoning for section two of the Fairview subdivision. This is a request to rezone thirteen lots from R one to high-density R three residential. The planning commission conducted their public hearing at their February fifteenth meeting, and based upon citizen concerns about increased density, recommended denial of the application. Subsequent to that, the applicant submitted a voluntary proffer statement that they would limit development of the thirteen lots to only single-family homes to alleviate any concern about additional development associated with duplexes. The primary reason for the request to rezone to R three is that some of the lots as they exist now do not meet the width and size requirements for R one development. And the developers seeking to have the smaller lot require, require, development requirements so that they can continue to develop those lots as they have developed the lots that were in the town limits.
I thought when he was here last that he had already brought up that he would proffer that. He did, right? Am I remembering things that he already said that he limited to singles?
He changed things quite a bit, hadn't he?
He, he, he had said that.
It was just verbally said, stated in a meeting, but it wasn't actually written in.
Correct, and that is, the, the written is included in, in your.
But as, as I'm reading this, so subsequent to the planning commission's meeting, after that, he then made it official.
Yes, sir, because.
Yes, that's unfortunate.
He's wanting to build the same size homes he's already done, is what I understand.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And so to be able to do that and not have a non-buildable lot for what he wants, it needs to be R.
R three, yes, sir.
Well, there will be single-family homes, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I believe that it was the, the realization of the recommendation of, of denial that did cause Mr. Ramsey to, to make the voluntary proffer.
Brian, you got a look of consternation or something on your face over there, anything you need, want to add to it?
I, you know, we talked with Chris about the R two zoning around the, you know, around the subdivision, so he had elected to try to go with the R three. And I think his lots would meet the R two setbacks, but that's up to him, I mean, he's the owner, he can make requests, so.
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the advantage of one over the other between two and three?
Well, the R three is actually required by the, the boundary line adjustment require, approval that the town and county made with Mr. Ramsey. One of the specific covenants was that after the properties were brought into the town, Mr. Ramsey would make application for an R three zoning. So it's kind of mandated that he make that request.
So I'm a little confused, does this have to go back to the planning commission since he's changed what he's asking for?
No, sir, I did confirm with, with Jason that it, it does not require, going back to the planning commission, the applicant has the ability to provide proffers at any time during the consideration. And, and Jason was, was very emphatic that what Mr. Ramsey has done does not require reconsideration by the, the planning commission.
So do we have a sense either by straw poll or by the comments made during the planning commission's meeting if their rationale for the unanimous denial was largely based on current zoning? I mean, is that largely what it was predominantly?
The, the two items that were brought up at the, the, the public hearing with the planning commission were concern about the increased density and having more traffic in the area. And then the use of Ellis Drive with the connection to Arthur Lane. The use of Ellis Drive during the, the, the town-county and, and Ramsey boundary line adjustment, the county confirmed to us that Ellis Drive was a non-maintained public road in the county. And that's what allowed the direct connection of Arthur Lane to Ellis Drive. So we, the town, have no ability to, to do anything further with regard to the connection of Ellis Drive. We have the ability to manage the concern about the density, and that's what led Mr. Ramsey to submit this proffer.
It'd be nice to know what the planning commission's thinking, because they've put a lot of time into it, just to know if they were like, if they would be now, oh, okay, yeah, that, that seems like a reasonable amount of density or something like that.
Had they rejected the proffer in advance of the decision, you mean, if it would change?
Yeah, I wish that, I wish it was like that, it's unfortunate that it.
I mean, I can, I can ask them if, if, if that would have done it, because effectively, those, the, the lots that were brought into the town are now existing lots and can be developed as single-family homes. So the, the density will not increase based on the, the R three zoning. So the, the, the development could have happened when it was in the county, the development can, can happen while it's in the town. So by Mr. Ramsey submitting this proffer, it does simply, you know, there's no additional development that will come based on.
What's his plan for the road? I mean, is that in that agreement and everything? I know I've looked at it, I've just got to remember.
He did, we did not include, it is a, Arthur Lane is a private road that will be maintained by the HOA for the Fairview subdivision. At our meeting, Mr. Ramsey committed verbally to paving both Arthur Lane and at least a portion, if not the majority of Ellis Drive. I don't recall him saying if he was going to take it all the way out to Antioch, but at least the area that was.
It's not about where it connects, a certain distance left and right where it connects.
Yeah, so he did, he verbally committed to paving.
I mean, that might be a good proffer to get that down, to get him, to give us a schedule when he was going to pave it, I mean.
He paved Ellis already to all the way up to the last house.
Oh, did he?
Has he paved on Ellis itself?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Oh, with that, to Antioch?
No, 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 that's, that's opposite, the last residence. Oh, no, I'm sorry, not Ellis, I apologize, the lane Lomelis, he paved that one.
Denberg, yeah.
Yeah, Denberg.
Because non, non-maintained is definitely the right word for Ellis Drive. A lot of potholes.
Well, he'd even offered that if others on Ellis Drive wanted to pay a certain amount per square foot or linear foot or however it was set up, that while that crew was there and mobilized, he'd work with the neighbors or something if they wanted to chip in and extend it. But that's what I recall him saying.
That's right.
Another question, the lot twelve, which I'm assuming that's a lot that's already been sold?
Yes, sir.
Has that been developed or is that a vacant lot as it sits?
It's been sold to an individual. I've, I've actually talked to him on the phone. He believes that he can build, I believe his lot met and exceeded the R one area for, for development of a home of similar size that Mr.
Right, that's what I was going to ask, are they going to be able to build on that leaving it R one?
It's my understanding that they would, the only, so I, I don't believe he needed to rezonate. He did indicate that if, for any reason he needed to, he would submit a rezoning application independently. But I don't believe that he does.
Okay, the key thing I was with that owner isn't aware.
Yes, I have talked with him, yes, sir. Yeah, he was, he was concerned that he, his lot was excluded. And I had told him that the, the application was by the property owner, and if he wanted to, he could submit it independently.
So Steve, you're going to kind of formally talk with the planning commission and see if they want to review it again, I mean, where are we going to go?
Well, no, I'll ask them if that would have influenced any change, and, and I'll, I'll ask if any of them are able to attend your, your meeting on the thirteenth just to offer that, any other concerns that they might have.
When do they meet again?
They meet on the fifteenth.
Alright, anybody else on this? Alright, Steve, sixteen Eden Road.
Yes, sir. Second public hearing the council will be conducting is a request from Lanny Bailey to operate a bed and breakfast home at sixteen Eden Road. There are a number of conditions that staff recommended and the planning commission continues to recommend. Basically, going from onsite management is required to be present whenever there's any guests. Limitations on the number of days that guests can be, the number of, limitations on the number of guests that can be there at any time. He does have the required off-street parking, business licensing. He did confirm that he does have the liability insurance in place. That he'll have, I think he has the, the smoke detectors, the carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers. That was one of the points of laughter at the planning commission meeting because he lives across the street from the chief of the Ray Fire Department, and so the, Mark did confirm that, yes, he does have fire extinguishers. Compliance with the town's noise ordinance, and basically that was, that, and he did confirm that he had no issues with those conditions.
I'm not, help me understand, so I see the house is two-bedroom, and not more than two guests may stay in a bedroom, but then it's up to six guests, which would be in addition to person staying on site.
So, yeah, I did.
What am I missing?
Yeah, well, I don't, I, I did, for, for a quick, for you a sec. So Mr. Bailey, in his letter, I don't read that, that he's asking for a B and B, I read that, that he's asking for a short-term rental.
Originally, he was, his, his application was for.
Which would not require a resident to stay.
Right, he originally was interested in short, just the lodging house, and told him that in the R two, he couldn't do that. So apparently, his brother resides in town, and he confirmed, I, I understood that he said that there was a basement that his brother would be staying in when, when needed.
Yeah, according to the letter, it doesn't state that, but that's fine if you, if you're.
Well, he, he, he committed, he, he was present at the public hearing and committed that to the, to the planning commission, that his brother.
Based on those recommendations from the staff and the commission.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's, yeah, so it's being turned into a three-bedroom sort of. So it's being turned, converted into a three, so this, the.
They give any comments in the public? They give any comments in the public?
Uh, well, the, the, uh, I don't recall there being anyone at the public hearing. We received a, uh, phone in from one of the other neighbors that, uh, was concerned if it had been a lodging house application, but they were, they were comfortable. They, they'd known both of the Bailey chi- uh, brothers and as long as one was onsite, they, they didn't have any concern.
So we'll have the public hearing on that at our...
Thirteenth.
March thirteenth meeting. Any more questions or comments?
So Joey, was your question answered? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, just by the drawing, so they're just gonna retrofit it for three beds, three bedrooms. I don't know, it doesn't show, does it?
I, I, he may not have said that, I, I, and I, I just, I recall basement, but he may have mentioned that it was gonna be one of the bedroom. I, I don't have, I can't be a hundred percent that he said the basement, but I thought he did.
Otherwise it wouldn't work based on the conditions.
It was, has it secured? I have been a guest, yeah, um, sure.
Steve, fill me in on the, the whole idea of all this. It, I believe if a man owns a property and has his house and his parents have his house and his parents pass away, that he should be able to keep it in his, in his name and, and rent it to people, even though, you know, we've got this thing going about too many short-term rentals in this town. It looks like if it becomes a short-term rental, then we get more tax dollars out of it, 'cause he still has to pay personal property taxes, I assume. So it'll make more income for the town residents if it's being rented a hundred and twenty days a year than if it wasn't. Is that correct?
He's gonna be paying, obviously, the real estate taxes, but he'd also be paying lodging tax monthly.
Which he'll collect from the people he rents it to. So, so we'll actually make more money if it's a short-term rental than if it's just somebody lived in it.
Potentially.
Potentially. Depends on how many weeks a year.
Depending on how much, you know, it's rented.
And, and what, it sounds like when, you know, when you got somebody onsite and somebody that's well-known in the neighborhood, it's, I don't see where it's a problem at all for that, the way I'm thinking of property ownership and what you should, shouldn't be able to do if you're property.
Uh, well, and, and again, the only concern had been from one of the neighbors that they just wanted to make sure that their, the onsite representation was...
Uh, which I fully understand, yeah. Alright, we'll, we'll have, oh, yeah, we'll have a hearing.
And, and Mr. Bailey, I'm, I fully anticipate Mr. Bailey attending council's public hearing so that, uh, if you have further questions, you can ask him.
Is there a rule, thumb that we use as far as how many, uh, occupants based on square footage? For now, I mean, it's a twelve-hundred square foot house, so it's, you know, it's pretty modest proportions, so...
Our code limits it to two people per bedroom, uh, with a maximum of six. And that, the, the interpretation or the, the, the further of that is six adults. You can have a few more kids, but it's a maximum of six, six adults.
Are we requiring the life and health safety inspection?
Uh, it requires an additional, um, item eleven. For our operation to obtain an updated certificate of occupancy from the Page County Building Official.
That's good.
More questions about this one?
Played by the rules that exist and, you know, is gonna follow all of these things that were recommended. Still excited to see what the planning commission comes up with in terms of short-term rentals generally, but in this case, I think it all makes sense.
We are having, the planning commission is having a public hearing on the ordinance amendment that incorporates basically all of those conditions so that in the future, the conditions would simply be citing that section of the town code.
Gotcha. Cause I mean, looking at this just as a total abstract example, I mean, this is definitely an example of, you know, pretty plain, normal residential home in a residential neighborhood kind of being flipped directly into the short-term rental. This isn't our kind of dream scenarios we've talked about of like, they fixed up something that was really falling apart or... So I, so I do think that still ha- going towards that ordinance and getting something from the planning commission is gonna be a good thing.
That should be for your consideration at your April meeting.
Great, thank you.
Alright, nobody else on this subject, Steve? Wanna move on to eight hundred Massanutten Avenue?
Yes, sir. Your final public hearing for the, the March meeting will be a request from, uh, Dwight and Angela Griffith to allow an apartment use at eight hundred, um, Massnutten Avenue. Um, the property is owned business and that does require a special use permit to establish an apartment at the, the property. The conditions, uh, recommended by the planning commission were, were off-street parking requirement for six vehicles and signage shall be considered for separate, by a separate permit application. Uh, the planning commission did conduct their public hearing at their February fifteenth meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the application.
What's their part, plan for six?
Yeah, parking.
Parking spaces, 'cause I mean, that's a, it's kind of a weird little area right there. People zip around that corner and...
Yeah, the triangular lot.
Little triangle, yeah.
I believe what they have talked about would be, uh, two, two spots at each of the, um, points of the triangle. They might be able to, to fit three at the...
There's plenty of room over there.
Yeah.
It's a pretty big, it's a pretty big lot. If you come off of Blue Bell Avenue, um, I would guess they'd probably put an entrance there, uh, staying away from the busy part up there in, uh, the shopping center, yeah. But if they came out of Blue Bell, it looks to me, I mean, I guess that parking could even go around the back of the apartments. I know there's entrances on the front. I've seen that remodel that's being done. It's been a long time coming too, I think.
Yeah, that thing has been there.
Didn't we, we zone that from residential to business?
I think we did a long time ago. They were gonna do something...
Have a garage or something, wouldn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, now we're back.
And then he wanted to convert, he, he established the three stalls as potential business offices and then now that he's got the, the, the subdivided, he's looking to, to go with the, the apartment use and, um...
Just don't make it a short-term rental.
This one makes more sense. It actually does. It's where it's at. The other apartments that are all down through Madison Avenue beside it, and I believe that's even a family member's house there, that you see forty-nine. I think that's part of the family, if I recall, but that makes sense.
Well, I gotta put in that, uh, there are several people that have told me for years they would love to see that end of the shopping center access closed, 'cause it's a dangerous turn. I say, I guess I can bring it up once. My wife is really dead-sent against that. If you add more apartments, you're gonna have more cars turning right there.
I'll defer to the chief. I don't know that we have a significant accident history with, with it.
I think she just doesn't like it.
No, it is a tricky spot.
It's weird, yeah.
But it is, it is kinda, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's not an optimal and it probably wouldn't have been permitted today, but as it's existing, uh, without a, a documented accident history, it's hard to...
Oh, I know. I, I told her I'd bring it up once.
People in the community, you're gonna slip with your euphemism.
You can go home now, Roger, alright. That's what you promised. Alright, let's, anybody else on that one? Alright, the last one here, local choice health benefits program renewal.
I've basically, uh, just wanted to keep council informed that, uh, the town has received notice from our insurance provider that there will be no rate increase this year, which is phenomenal.
Yes.
First year.
First year in forever.
Several years, yeah. That's, I, I actually assumed with the cost of everything else that we would see an increase this year, um, but I was pleasantly surprised that there, um, is no rate increase. Everything were a neutral and, um, we will proceed with that and include that in our budget figures.
Steve, you have something? Go ahead.
Yes, and I forgot to mention it to you prior to our start, um, Ed Donner, when Stephanie mentioned EDA. Um, I spoke with Meredith Dees in the last couple of weeks. I told you, Mr. Meredith, uh, she had spoken with, uh, Leslie Curley, who had an interest in serving on the EDA as the Le Ray representative. Um, I reached out to her, I spoke with her last week, and Leslie's excited about it and has actually served in that position in the past, so she has served on the EDA before. And she said she'd be more than willing to, uh, to do that. And so I'm just wondering, is that something, if we're in agreement, we could add to the agenda on the council meeting?
Yes, sir. If that's council's desire, we can absolutely.
And I mean, we could, I guess we'd discuss some of that now if anyone has any questions, but...
I, I don't, don't know that. Well, I've always been very impressed by her professionalism and, uh, so I think, so I think she'll be fine.
She's a Wacovian tied into the real estate world and...
Oh, wait a minute. Wait, wait, Leslie?
Leslie, yeah.
She's a Wacovian?
Yeah, yes, I believe so.
Alcova, Alcova, mortgage.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Her daughter works her banks, that's why I was like, are you staying? I was like, what, what plan?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she'll be a great addition.
So we just have to vote, went to vote on her?
I believe that we recommend her appointment by the Board of Supervisors, 'cause the EDA is a county functions. But, yes, sir, we will include that on, on your March agenda for the, the recommendation.
Alright, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Anyone else on that?
I didn't bring this up in the budget stuff, but I know we had talked at the retreat about maybe starting to do five and ten-year sort of look-aheads just so we have a, an idea of the budget horizon and challenges that could exist, revenue issues, et cetera. Think that prepares us to protect taxpayers and make informed decisions. So I don't know if we would start looping that into this budget process or if there's something we could do at another time of the year when the actual budget we're writing up is figured out, but just whatever you all think, I think it would be nice to start that tradition.
I don't know that we'll have time to develop a, a multi-year projection for the thing that we're presenting in March, but we can definitely work towards that throughout the fiscal year, yes.
Yeah, and I mean, don't, you know, don't throw another crazy thing on your desk, but I think in the long run.
I would not throw it on Brian's.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else? I don't think we have any ribbon cuttings or anything scheduled, do we, Steve?
Not that I'm aware of.
We're adjourned.